Just do a roll, regular roll call.
Uh, roll call?
Mayor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Samaras.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Nine yeses. And just one second, I think Counselor Samaras, you wanted me to indicate who was in the chamber?
Yes.
Well, we just had the roll call. We're all here.
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, Mayor's Business Communication Remote Zoom Participation Pursuant to the Governor Baker's Emergency Order of Modifying State's Open Meeting Law issued March 12, 2020, meetings will be held using remote participation as followings, as follows. Members of public may view the meeting via LTC, online streaming, local cable channel, as they may not participate in person. Uh, so that's on the record. We don't need a roll call for that, right? All right. So I need a motion except by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Elliott. Evaluations, City Manager, City Clerk, and City Auditor. Counselor Elliott.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think the bulk of the evaluations will probably be the City Manager, so there's no objection. Perhaps we can just go into Auditor and Clerk and dispose of those two, and then another manager has a nice presentation for us, so if there's no objection, I just thought that would make some sense.
Okay, thank you. So, good suggestion. We'll start with the Auditor first, and, um, again, my apologies, I thought this was a subcommittee meeting, so.
No, I.
Sure, Counselor.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think it was a little confusing, because I had filed the motion for the Subcommittee that provides oversight on this, of which I'm not a member, by the way, to meet, but in the interest of time, I think we just referred it to a special meeting of the City Council to have this discussion, so, thank you.
So, just, I'm sorry, I need a little help. Counselor Mercier, do I just go right to the Auditor?
Uh, we're gonna evaluate and give you our response to the overall, um, evaluation of the City Auditor First. I would think so.
So, I would request that the Auditor provide, she did send us a letter, if you want to either, please provide a, uh, an update and/or discussion of, um, how long you've been here, over a year now, so, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we request that the Auditor provide.
Okay. And one quick question, too. So, I don't have, like, results in front of me, does Mary, okay. So, we'll go right to the Auditor and ask for your, my apologies, we'll ask for your report.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure, Counselor Samaras.
Uh, okay, I mean, originally, this was under the Subcommittee personnel, but the issue was, this was a full meeting of the City Council. The one thing I did request was that the, uh, head of human relations, Ms. Calery, be prepared also to give a note view that was provided to her by all of the City Councils. So, along with the auditor making their own presentation, and the clerk, uh, Mary Calery is also ready to advise us as to how the evaluation took place with all City Councils. She has all that information.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, thank you. Okay. Um, we'll go right to the Auditor first.
Hello? Okay. Um, I've been here since December 2019, so it'll officially be just over a year now. Uh, when I first came onboard, it was interesting, there was sort of like a clean slate in the Auditor's office, so I did present, uh, a memo with a little bit of the highlights of our accomplishments and some goals for next year, for 2021. Um, but if anybody has any questions or concerns, you can ask now or email me. Um, it's been a pleasure working for the City of Lowell for the past year, and I hope my office has, uh, been what you needed and what you looked for. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll go right into questions. Counselor Elliott?
No, I don't have questions, but can you please just deliberate on your memo that you sent?
Sure.
Some of the goals, some of the, uh, highlights of what you have been working on since you've been here in December. Um, I think that'll be helpful, rather than go through questions, so.
Okay. Um, so, in calendar year 2020, as you know, we were hit with the pandemic, so that kind of put a lot of damper on some of the, uh, goals that I wanted to have in place for today, but I think we've made a lot of headway. The, um, the ones that I want to highlight are really important. I think the fact that we've developed policies and procedures for the auditing department, there before were no policies and procedures in place. I think that helps with the staff, empowers them, makes them feel that they can make their decisions and do their work better, faster, more efficiently. Um, I've worked with Powers and Sullivan, we've filed all the DLS paperwork, all the auditing paperwork, all the financial paperwork, on time, everything is, um, all set for fiscal year 20, fiscal year 19, I'm sorry, fiscal year 20 is still, the audit is underway, and it's almost completed.
Excuse me, Ms., just for one second. If anybody on Zoom, um, can you, can you make sure that you're muted, because we're getting some feedback. So, if you don't have any questions at this time, just make sure you're muted. Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, continue.
We have a couple of projects in place, and we're working with MIS right now. Uh, I've headed the biweekly payroll project. Hopefully, that will get started in fiscal year 21. Uh, we started the employee self-service, which is a tool where employees can report their time electronically and have access to all their HR paperwork, um, not HR, I'm sorry, payroll paperwork, such as W-2s, pay stubs, things like that, and then the workflow is all electronic. So, we're working towards becoming paperless. Uh, we're about a 98% direct deposit rate and a 99% of electronic pay stub of all direct deposit employees. Another good highlight, I'd probably say, is that we've created a procedure for journal entries, whereas before it was sort of, uh, you contact the Auditor's office and they just put in a journal entry. Now, we have workflow. The Manager's Office, specifically the CFO, is now aware of all entries made in the system, um, and they're all verified, approved, and uploaded right into Munis. Um, we've also put more accountability on departments. Previously, departments were not in tune with their financials. We push back a lot. Um, my staff has been instructed to make sure that each department head and each department knows what they're looking at, why they're looking at, and what they're spending is, um, in line or not in line with what they're thinking. Um, I think that's really the big highlights, besides the fact that, you know, there are some accounting things that happened. Um, you know, I reconciled most of the balance sheet. Uh, for you, for those of you who aren't accountants per se, that's a big, big report for the financial statements. Before, I don't know when the last time it's been reconciled, so I think that's probably my most proudest achievement this year. Um, and I'd say that's, that's a big chunk of what we've completed. Keep in mind, like I did say, there was a pandemic, we're working on rotating schedules, um, keep contact down, and everybody seems to be in a better place morale-wise.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Elliott?
I don't have any questions, just a short statement. Um, Mr. Mayor, sorry, by the way, to the viewing audience, there's nobody within 10 feet of, of me. Um, so, I just wanted to say, Madam Auditor, this, this is not one of the more, um, high visibility offices, however, um, I feel that the role is as important as, as any in the city, and I think you and your staff have played a significant role in, um, maintaining the financial integrity, because it's about spending and accountability of taxpayer dollars. So, you know, as you mentioned, you're charged with maintaining all expenditures, the internal controls, a plus $360 million budget, um, as of FY 2021, and I want to concur, reconciling the balance sheet has been problematic, and while it is an accounting, um, you know, issue, we won't get in, into the detail, it is significant, and it has been noted in other management reports. Um, so, I think, I think that's a crowning achievement, and I think it's worthy of mention. So, uh, to me, again, in light of this, uh, you maintained strong fiscal controls at a time, as you mentioned, where folks had to work remotely, they were, you know, coming in and out of City Hall, which is, um, you know, is just uncharted territory. So, uh, I commend you for going paperless. You're working towards going biweekly payroll with the administration. That has been, uh, something that's important to save money and increase accuracy. I know, I know we're not there yet, but, uh, just collaborating with other departments and, um, you know, just paying the bills, quite frankly, making sure the bills are being paid, making sure payroll is done accurately, and people are getting their paychecks. Uh, so, I do think, I think that's important. As a Chair of the Finance Subcommittee, I know that you have come to meetings and you have presented, as well as to the City Council. You've been responsive to requests, so, uh, I appreciate your service, your dedication, your staff during these times, and I, I like the goals that you're setting. We'll look forward to the FY, uh, FY 20 audit, and, um, you know, we'll, we'll convene some meetings at that time, so, um, I, I think you did excellent work, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just concur with many of Counselor Elliott's remarks. What also impresses me is the teamwork that you show with the Manager's Office, with the CFO. Um, I think that if you don't have that, you know, the city are talking to me in deep trouble, so, uh, to see that, working at meetings, and you've been here all the time, it's nothing but an effort to us, so thank you. Uh, thank your staff as well, and good presentation.
Thank you. Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, am gonna take off my mask, just like when I take it off when I eat my lunch. I don't keep my mask on, so I figured I'd take it off. I'm very pleased with your performance, Tina. This has been a great, uh, you know, year for you and for us as well, because knowing firsthand the things that can happen, they wouldn't necessarily call you, they would call this council and tell us of the problems that they were having, such as many years ago when I was the mayor, and I got, I was inundated with calls as to the figures going over to Boston from the teachers that retired, and none of the figures matched up with what they expected it to be. Everything was so messed up, it took so long to try to reconcile it, straighten it out, and I don't hear any of that here. So, congratulations on that. It's not easy being an auditor and trying to straighten everything out and getting the figures right, and this grant, and this thing, and that. Very, very difficult. I have not received one call from anybody stating that there's a problem in the Auditor's Office. I believe we would, because the Auditor works for this council, so I'm very, very proud of your work, and I would be willing to support your next step increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from anybody online? Anybody else? All set? Um, okay. Do we want to jump to the next one, or we want to hear a summary from Mary Calery, or just move on?
If I could just do it all at the end?
Okay, okay. So, now we'll go to the clerk. Mr. Clark?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is just part of the process, where I'm an ordinance employee, and as, as part of that, in order to move up the ordinance grid, I need a positive evaluation from this board. Um, I reviewed your, um, your evaluations that you have sent me, and they were quite favorable, and I appreciate that a lot. Um, I love working this job still, after so many years, and I love working for this council, and the indication that you've given me pretty high marks in terms of evaluation indicates to me that the public feels that same way, because basically, you are the public in this building, and I appreciate that effort. Um, and the past year, all I can say is COVID, COVID, COVID. We've made adjustments because of this pandemic, tremendous strides. I was faced with a 60% reduction in my workforce due to other things outside of COVID. We've managed that tremendously. Um, at first, when, when, when everybody had to leave the building in March, um, we, we got organized, we, we did some, some scanning, some, some record retrieval, we kept them busy out there. When the public came in, um, we kept them busy as well. We were extremely busy, uh, we get over 200 calls a day sometimes. We are busy, and we are doing a great job, I feel, in terms of rotating our staff in because of the COVID, and taking care of the public. I look forward to our next challenge in terms of setting appointments, the software that is coming. I look forward to implementing that, and I'm sure we'll do just fine on it. Again, my staff's up now, I'm only 20% light on it, um, but it was difficult, and I just praise my staff for that. They, they worked their butts off. It was, and they worked hard, and, you know, they put their nose to the grindstone, they did, they put forth a great effort, a great effort, and, and I can only do the same thing, because you can, if, if your people are working hard for you, are busting their butt for you, you gotta do the same, and I have no problem with that, and I expect that to continue in the future, and I, and I hope to, you know, to meet the challenges that are here. I, I don't know where this is going, but I know that we can adjust down in that clerk's office. I know we'll do a great job, and I look forward to any challenge that's put before us. I look forward to serving you guys again, with any, with any requests that you may have, and I just want to recognize the City Manager as well, and because I have a small, you know, I, I protect my 2,500 square foot office, you know. Um, she did a great job in terms of this pandemic going forward. She gave a pretty inspirational speech at a couple of Department Heads ago, outlining what she thought of our, our employees, and what she thought about what the Department Heads, and I relayed that to my people, and they appreciated that. And, and I make sure my people know every day that they're doing a great job, and, and I'm there to help them. Um, so I look forward to the challenges. I, I hope we get back to normal, but I, I don't know, you know. Whatever normal is, we'll, we'll deal with it and move forward. So, again, I thank you for your, for your input on my, my performance, and I look forward to moving up, up the grid as well. Thanks.
Any questions from the chambers? One second. Sure, Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike just mentioned, um, you know, the reduction in his workplace. I, I didn't know that it was that, that much, 60%, you know, last year's, yet he really performed, you know, really well, and, you know, he's, I mean, if you're talking about, you know, conducting meetings, either council or Subcommittee, he's always on time, in advance, you know, prepare all the logistics of the meeting, ensure that the meeting go properly, and, and, you know, he's, he's very flexible, adjusts, and, you know, he's, he's very open-minded kind of person, and you just look at this year, the implementation of online documents, and just, that's just a start, and then I'm hoping, I'm, I'm, I want to see going forward that the implementation of online document requests and whatnot will, will, will make it a big for the city, but, you know, he, he done fantastic job. I congratulate him for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott?
Sure, I have a few comments, uh, I'd like to make, uh, unlike the Auditor's Office, there are a few offices in City Hall where the public has been impacted at times by the closure at City Hall due to COVID, and the clerk's office was a challenge, but I've, on the way to reinvent, uh, to do business, so, you know, people could get documents, get their vital records, and, um, you're, as you mentioned, your, your office interfaces with the public, that is the bread and butter of your office. High volume of people who need important information. So, I do, I want to commend you, Mr. Clerk, for, you and your staff, your efforts. You talked about the 60% reduction in staff, um, all the while still processing documents, learning online, um, processing of documents, and important, because these documents, people need them. They, uh, they need birth certificates, they need marriage licenses, uh, you know, dog licenses, notarization, uh, very, death certificate is very important, um, things, and I think transactions that were once routine with, you know, just dropping in the office, um, had to be handled completely differently, and whether it was drop boxes or appointments. Um, I think your, your office transformed in a, in a very timely manner, um, to, to adapt, and I think that's a credit to you and the staff, so. Um, and then, on the other hand, other, other side of your responsibilities with, with preparing the agenda and Subcommittee meetings that we continue to have, um, you know, this, the pandemic gave you no notice to prepare, to plan, or, or alter the course of how we do business with, with these meetings. Uh, certainly, including myself, I had never heard of Zoom, um, other than the, the popular TV show when I was a kid. Never heard of Zoom, but we had to, and you did, you adapted, uh, to learn this process, and, and it's not easy, maybe it seems a little bit easier now, but I thought that was an important transition that, that you handled very well. You continued to handle, still have challenges, uh, but you handled very well. So, I thank you for your resiliency, uh, and your staff, you're versatile and resourceful. Uh, I think you have a, uh, you know, a working relationship and, you know, partner well with all the other departments, and I, I think that's important. So, um, I think you did an excellent job, and, um, you know, you outlined some of the goals moving forward, that's important, so, uh, so, again, uh, job well done. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you. Counselor Mercier, and then Counselor Conway?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm glad that we have these meetings like this, because it isn't every day that I say, "Oh, great job, Michael, uh, you know, your staff's doing a great job," but today is the day that I have the chance to tell you that, as long as I've been here, I do a lot of observing. You may not know that, but I do, and I, I really think I could judge a person's character by the unexpected happens, happenings that happen in City Hall, and how do you prepare for that? How do you handle that? We never knew that we'd have to use Zoom, as Counselor Elliott said. I know that you're involved with this very highly. I see the work that goes into not only your office and your staff, but the extra things that you have to do, too, with LTC, and things that you never had to do. It's not on your, your list of, uh, requirements to be a City Clerk, so I want you to know that I am very, very impressed with how you adapted to the, the, the things that were hit your way unexpectedly, and I know that you have a wonderful staff, you let them know it. You could have a nice staff and not praise them, but you do, you're good to your staff, and I think the better you are to them, it reflects back, and they want to give you more, and I know that you reciprocate by all the good that you do, too. I want you to know how much I appreciate the times that I called you on your cell phone at home. I mean, it isn't just a nine-to-five job here, or whatever, every day. I call you all hours of the evening, I'm so sorry for that. Um, I call you on the weekends, that's not any of my business, so I've been, put you through an awful lot, and I want to apologize firsthand, but I want to thank you for all the great work that you do. I'd like to also, uh, I did give you a good, good evaluation. I meant everything that I said. I would have made it perfect, but only God is perfect, didn't I tell you that?
Yes, you did.
But anyway, I approve if this goes to the next step for you. Thank you.
I appreciate it, Counselor, and I'll keep striving to, to be God-like, I guess, but, um, in terms of, any communications from any Counselor, anytime, I welcome, and I just got to do, in terms of Zoom and the technical part, MIS has been a huge, huge help in terms of moving forward with this, too, as well, so I just want to have them recognized, recognizing them.
Thank you. Counselor Conway, and then Counselor Drinkwater?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to congratulate the, uh, the Clerk, Mike Geary, for doing a great job, and, and, you know, when you take a look at the Auditor's job and the Clerk's job, those are, uh, as I believe Counselor Mercier mentioned, you know, uh, no complaints, and, uh, I certainly haven't had any complaints, and not only that, but, uh, these, as we pointed out, were very, very trying times, and yet, uh, I do believe that both departments certainly were able to adjust, and I remember back a number of weeks ago, when I put a motion on, uh, to look into, uh, having birth certificates and death certificates and marriage certificates online, and I know that we weren't doing it at that time. Uh, other places were doing it, and I know that you guys rolled up your sleeves and, and you made it happen, and for that, I, I certainly applaud you, and I think it was good for the, it was good for the city. These are important documents that people, uh, wanted and needed to have. Uh, so, once again, I thank you for doing a good job, and, uh, and the other thing is, and just very briefly, uh, a lot of people don't congratulate the individuals that work for them, and what you just said is so very, very important, by thanking the staff, and that does go a long way. So, again, great job, and, uh, I look forward to working, continue to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I concur with, um, all of the accolades mentioned by my colleagues here, and I want to take the opportunity to thank not only the Clerk, but the staff. Uh, but just from my own perspective, uh, coming in last year as a new member, uh, there's a lot to learn, um, and, uh, want to thank you, Mr. Clerk, for always being available to, to answer questions and, and make sure I was prepared, uh, coming in, particularly as a new member, and, um, yeah, I know I've called you a number of times, I don't know if I've ever had a, a call go to voicemail, just, I'm extremely responsive, and, you know, whether it's a call or email, always hear, uh, right back. So, particularly, you know, coming in, you made me feel very comfortable with the, you know, the rules and the procedures and everything else, so I wanted to particularly thank you for that. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All the things I want to say and compliment the Clerk and the staff have already been said by my colleagues, and they've said so wonderfully, but I do want to reiterate, Counselor Mercier, as a compliment to you, Mr. Clerk, how that you pick up the phone calls all the time, whether it's weekday, weeknights, weekends, whether you're in your office, at home, or even on vacation, you're always available to take our phone calls, and as, uh, being new to the council, also, I have so many questions about process, procedure, as Counselor Drinkwater mentioned, and you always have given a very professional, independent opinion as to let us know what's going on. So, I really appreciate all your hard work, you make yourself available, uh, being professional, being very courteous. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other, Counselor Rourke?
Yeah, quickly, Mr. Mayor, thank you, especially during this time with the building being shut, uh, down for a while, they're not open for the public. Um, I think I've referred more people to the Clerk's office than probably to the manager, or, over the past few months, and, um, you know, I always get a phone call back from, from the person, um, thanking me for how they were treated at the Clerk's office. Uh, I know that Mr. Clerk and your staff and, and Miss Getche have gone above and beyond, meeting people outside, um, you know, with forms and, and payments and so forth, so, uh, it's really been, um, a good representation of the city, um, of the City Council, and of everybody that works in the building. So, uh, you know, thank you for that service, and your staff as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I just want to quickly say from here.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Counselor Samaras?
Uh, just, uh, in review, everything Ben said, I think what people, the public, really has to realize, that due to this pandemic, uh, we've had a lot of issues, and when you talk about leadership, it's what do they do during an emergency situation. So, I think, you know, the citizens of Lowell have been well-served, uh, by their actions, so I think that's important to note during this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just want to mention a couple of things, too, that, uh, like everyone else said, you adapted to the Zoom meetings. It's not easy running the Zoom meetings. We had a lot of fun doing it, learning it, and, uh, your hires, too. Like you said, you had people moving on, and, uh, you gave people the opportunity to come in from other departments. They worked for you, you had some good opportunities for people in the community, so applaud you for making good selections, and, uh, it's always a pleasure working with you, so, thank you. Um, next, we'll move on to City Manager. City Manager?
Uh, thank you, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want, too, want to first start out by thanking the council. Um, I, too, was provided with, um, the evaluations, and I'm grateful for the support of this council, um, and, and the leadership of the council. I do have on the agenda tonight, we have a presentation, 2020 Year in Review, as an informational, without going into it in complete detail here. I wanted to make a few comments tonight, um, and I join the comments that have already been made by Madam Auditor and Mr. Clerk, that 2020 was most definitely one of the most tumultuous years, and one of the most difficult years for the City of Lowell with the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. This was a public health crisis that impacted This was a public health crisis that impacted every aspect of city operations, both from a functional point of view and fiscal dilemmas that it presented. And it was, when you think back to a year when this Council was sworn in, it was inconceivable to think a couple of months later that we would be thrown into the midst of this. But I do want to point out that in spite of the challenges and the demand on the city resources that this pandemic has put on all of us, this Council and the city has continued to move forward. Tremendous 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week situation we were all faced with. But through that all and through dealing with the challenges, we've never taken our eye off the ball and tried to keep to all of our goals. And I do want to say that none of this would have been possible without the extraordinary dedication and hard work of our city employees, the department heads, the rank and file, the staff members. You know, people have said to me recently, well, that must be nice. City Hall is closed, as though people aren't working. That couldn't be further from the truth. Everybody is working. Everybody is here. We rotate in and out, at least some of the departments are, to keep people safe. But the workload has increased, not decreased. And through this all, trying to keep an eye on safety, it has not gone unnoticed by some that, you know, some communities just shut down services for a period of time. We never did. We continued operating every single department at full tilt to provide the residents of Lowell with the city services that they needed. And so this Council, this city, we set an ambitious course. And that course was the continued commitment of our workforce and our focus on critical areas. And those critical areas of economic development and financial management, public safety, partnerships, education, those have continued to be our critical areas of focus. And I will say, as we'll go through in the presentation later tonight, accomplishments, accomplishments that, that this city, that this Council has led the charge on. And it has been a tremendous achievement in the face of the pandemic. And so these essential pillars enable the city to continue progress. And we have unforeseen challenges ahead of us. There's no doubt about that. But we have been focusing at all levels on economic development, both those ongoing major milestones, as well as taking care of our small business during this pandemic, quality of life issues, improving city services as we've been placed in a challenging position. And, and as we've noted here, and we'll talk about it in further detail. But we didn't have the infrastructure in place to do all the remote services that we were going to have to do. We had to come up with the plan, the hardware, the software. How do we make sure every department can operate? That employees can operate at home, that they have everything they need to do that? That we can make sure our residents are going to be able to access those services? And so that's just one example of just the continued ongoing demands that the pandemic has placed on all of us. We think of it as a health crisis and it truly is. And that's been a huge demand on our health department. We'll talk about that in the presentation. But it's been a demand on every department. It's been a demand on whether it's our public safety front facing, all of the challenges they faced, whether it's the Clerk's office, my office, every office, DPW. Talk about what DPW has had to face during this. It has just been on and on. And, and also, you know, we've had to pay very good and close attention to education. What are we doing about kids? What are we doing trying to get kids back in school? How are we working hand in hand? So those are some of the highlights that I wanted to point out in this year. It's been a difficult year. On the other hand, we haven't lost any ground on our major goals. And so the City of Lowell is in good shape. Normally, at this time of year, a lot of cities will give a state-of-the-city address. I think in light of what we've just come through and what we're still in the midst of, looking back and giving a true clear-eyed assessment of what 2020 was is really important at this point of time. And we'll do state-of-the-city around the time of the budget. So we can talk about where are we now as we are trying to do our next budget. I do want to just say to the Council that this has been one of the most challenging jobs in years. It's been one of the most rewarding jobs. I love this job. I thank you each for giving me this opportunity to be the City Manager of the City of Lowell. You know, I, I certainly loved it before, but I can tell you this. Coming through since March to now, working so closely with so many, especially our leadership and our employees in this city, you see true heroism every day. You see people who are tired, who are still coming in, still doing the job, still making sure that the City of Lowell is operating. Those are the things when people say, huh, this must be never-ending. Well, it is never-ending, but you're not in it alone. We have great people here in the city. And I also need to give a shout out to our state partners and our federal partners because they've been there. They've been trying to help us all along too. So again, I want to thank you for your support. I want to thank you for your evaluations tonight. I appreciate that sincerely. And I look forward to continuing on and we will be out of this pandemic. I'm confident. Can't give you a date, but I'm confident it's going to happen. So, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel Elliot?
I'll jump in. I don't know if the Chair of the Personnel Subcommittee, he, he wanted to say something earlier. I'll defer.
Okay. Counselor Smaris, did you want to go first?
So I'm sorry.
No.
I want to thank Counsel Elliot for the opportunity. Also, the general statement, you know, when we talk about this pandemic and you talk to other people about leadership in their communities, various communities, I've heard in some cases where people have said, because of this pandemic, certain people weren't able to show their true leadership or they weren't able to do the job the way it should be. But I think when a situation like this comes up, arises like this that we've had, I think we've been blessed by having the leadership of this present City Manager. When you have a problem, when, when a problem exists and it's a real problem, it's a problem that affects so many people, this is when we look for and demand true leadership. And I think what we have had with City Manager Dan Ho is true leadership during a very, very serious time, a time that has literally affected every citizen in the City of Lowell. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you to the City Manager. I think one of the things as Mayor, in developing City Manager's contract, the City Manager is not on the grid, but within her contract is the right to have a step increase based on a good evaluation. And we know, I know that she's received an excellent evaluation from the Mary Calery, our Head of Human Relations. So that is just, want to make that everybody aware that that is part of the City Manager's contract that she's entitled to a step increase. And I would propose that she be allowed to help that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure. Counsel Elliot, and then we'll go to Counsel.
Sure, I'll go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Contrary to the reports in the newspaper, I'm not a member of this Subcommittee, but I did file the motion, so. And also, it's implied that I do support you, Madam Manager, when you were hired. And I did. For consistency's sake, didn't have, I didn't support contracts in the past. However, I supported you and I continue to. So I, I'd just like to set the record straight. But also, you know, moving forward, what the process is, because as you mentioned, Madam Manager, I think it's important for you to come for, come to meet with us with the state of the city and our accomplishments, goals that are being set. This seems to be, you know, with some administrations, they evaluate, it's not, what, what is the, can I just ask what the ordinance is? Do, do you know? Does a Clerk know? Who initiates this? Is it the Chair of the Personnel Subcommittee? Is it you? I, I would just like to know this clarification moving forward.
The, the City Manager ordinance? I don't have a copy here, Counsel. I, I believe that the.
Is it contract related or?
The contract refers to the ordinance.
Okay. So there is an ordinance.
Contract incorporates the ordinance.
That the Counselor, is it the Mayor?
Actually, the Clerk sends out evaluations and I believe it might be in the summer. I, I don't know that, you know, but that's, I think that's what the ordinance provides.
Okay. Because I, I just want to say in years past, I think it was under Manager Lynch, it was, it was in September and it was an annual basis. So I think it's good to get back to exchange information because.
I suspect it's the same ordinance process.
So, you know, that being said, as you mentioned and other members of the, other members are also stated, during normal times, government, government is, is changing and to become more efficient, more responsive to the public. And we have to change with the times. And I feel even before this year, administration is, has done well to keep pace and, and then some. In the last year, we've had issues of racism, pandemic, fiscal crisis, infrastructure needs, all issues that we have not, you know, these, these things we've not seen, at least in my lifetime. You, along with the Council, you have set a course to keep the public safe, keep the public informed and, and resolve issues to address problems to me in an unprecedented and a remarkable manner, Madam Manager. So I, I feel your leadership, we've addressed issues unlike ever in the city. Health and safety of the people, our children, employees, in the entirety have been paramount interest. Excuse me. And you've led the way in a, in a careful, so folks have, they got to mute their.
I just sent them a message.
Whoever's on Zoom has got to.
Counsel Smaris, don't forget to mute. Thank you.
Just, people, it's just, we hear feedback here. So, you know, that being said, I was saying you have led us in a careful and a measured manner. I feel that you've been open to suggestions. I think that you've presented information for discussion in timely and fair manner. For me, communication was a must at the outset. And I think you've done yeoman's work to keep us up to date during critical times and, and then after. And I think that's, I think that's important. So we can keep our constituents updated and informed. So I feel you have delivered there. You know, and we're going to talk about the big issues, major issues, the pandemic and racism and very important major issues. But I also think the day-to-day, and Counsel Mercy mentioned it, it's the small little things that you can't miss out on either because those are the things that we bring forward. And I pick up the phone and I call you and they're resolved. And I, I think that's important. So, you know, keeping our safe streets, keeping them plowed, getting the trash picked up, all during these things, they're, they're important. City finances, I feel, I, I have to speak to this because we've had many meetings and I think it is very important. We've, we've managed through all this and I know taxes had to go up a little bit, but we've had no layoffs. There's been no major, no additional staff hires. And we've had to use the rainy day fund and, because that, that's what it's there for. And we, and we've had to use it. So I think we've, we've struck that balance and moving forward, we'll continue. Our bond rating is, is still top to, right at the top. And I, I think all these things are important. So I don't, I don't want to consume too much time, but I, the only thing I will say, and it's not really, it's not you, Madam Manager, but I will say over the course of the last year, the number of motions that have been put forth, and I, and I know they're important. However, I just feel that given what is on your plate, given our goals, given economic development, small business, public safety, the schools, the infrastructure, I, I just hope that, and, and I'm guilty of this, I understand, but I just see the number of motions that have been filed consuming a significant amount of your time and that of the staff. And perhaps some can be just, you know, maybe if it takes, we, we can, you know, use a phone call instead of filing a motion because then the motion requires a response. And I think many of the things then can, can, it'll be much more productive to me, a phone call. I know that, as I mentioned, I call. And perhaps that's the measure that we should all, that's a standard that we should all use for all of our individuals. So you do allow time to perform, you know, duties other than just writing reports, responding to, to motions, because it is significant. And if you look at our agendas, they're getting longer and longer. And one, at one element of those agenda items are motions, so. And you've answered them all. This is, this is just something that I think it's, that we need to work on to, to be more productive. So I thank you and your staff for, I'd say, overachieving and doing excellent work. And we're not out of this. And then again, as we're going to see with the presentation, the plate's full. So, thank you. I appreciate it on behalf of the people in the city.
Thank you. Counsel Rock, then Counsel Mercy.
Counsel Mercy can go first, you're late. I'm sorry.
Counsel Mercy.
Thank you, Counsel Rock. I firmly believe that you're only as good as the people you surround yourself with because their hard diligent work makes you look good. So I want to reflect on Connor Baldwin. And I'm so glad that you kept him because he's an ace. He's unbelievable. Shauna Forsia, Peter, Philip, Kara. These are people that made you look good. And that's a good thing. That's a good thing because they made you shine, I believe. And the one thing that over the years, the Council wanted was communication. Communication, a simple word, communication. It really, rarely happened, but it's happening now. And I'm very, very grateful for that. Information, I think we should know what's going on around here. You inform us through the communication. So I'm very, very grateful for that. On a personal level, when I call you, you're always available. I, I appreciate that. I probably never told you, but I'm very grateful. Because what I have to say is probably not that important, but it is to the person that I'm relaying the message by. It's very, very important. So I'm very proud of you, Madam Manager. I, I know this isn't an easy job, absolutely not. It's not easy to be the Mayor either, but we didn't want to tell him that. But we knew that you would be sharp enough to know that you were going to work very, very hard. And again, like I said to the City Clerk, you've met challenges head-on that we would have never, ever expected, and yet you handled them tremendously. And every time there's an opening of the Hamilton Garage or there's anything going on in the city, Salapoli's opening, you're always there, you're always representing the city to the best of your ability, which makes us all so very proud. I know we don't say this every day, like I said to Michael, Gary and Tina, but we're very proud. We're only responsible for those people here. You're responsible for the other departments. And I'm only as good as those that I surround myself with. And you are the three people that I surround myself with. So if you're not doing a good job, I don't look good either. So I think that I look pretty darn good in the City of Lowell. And if you don't know what's going on, we feel it every day because we're here and we know the things and the hard work. The average person probably don't know all the ins and outs of all the diligence and community. of all the diligence and communication and, you know, so much going on, the finances and balancing this and balancing that. So I'm very, very proud. I gave you a very good evaluation. So I would support the three of you to go to the next step. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I was fortunate enough to be re-elected to the council, you know, obviously I had very high expectations of serving before of the city manager and, and her office. You know, not knowing what's going to come in the future of, of the first year back, I think the leadership that the manager has shown, you know, through her actions and through her staff, has really been second to none. You know, major projects that are still going on in the city. You see that, that the construction and development that the city continues to go through. No time was taken off in, in those areas. And so to progress forward in, in very difficult times is, is a real achievement that I, I think, you know, you should take some credit for. I know you'll pass it off, but I think being the leader of the city during this time was an added pressure maybe no other manager's ever had before. And I, I, like Counsel Mercy, gave very high grades or remarks for, for my review. I would support any step raise that's, that's there. And also in getting back to even some of your hires that you have put in place over the past year, you know, whether it's Christine McColl, Director of Economic Development, who has been, you know, downtown and in business districts, you know, on a weekly basis, right? Asking what can be done, what can the city do to assist during very difficult times? You know, Christine Clancy from DPW, right, you know, Shannon Cohen from PAX. You're putting people in place that, that, you know, the first and foremost is work and, you know, how hard they can assist you and the council in getting not only the work of the day done, but also the future of, of the city in place. And just over the past year, when people have contacted me or called me, you know, I just jot down the names of the employees that people call me on, you know, and they go through the effort of, of calling me and telling me, you know, this person helped out, this person was terrific. So I feel that, you know, it's necessary to, again, to, to say their names, you know, and to really, you know, to give them some of the, you know, kudos that they deserve. You know, from, again, from, from Christine McColl to Yovani Baez, who have gotten many positive remarks, and Christine Clancy, Shannon Cohen, a health director, Joanne Blanger, you know, Shaw Masato, who I, I know has been working day and night a lot of the time with our health inspections, you know. And, and how many times I've gotten calls from, on, on Steve Nockler's behalf, a building inspector, for emergency things to get done before a closing or before a business needs to, to start up, you know. And also, you know, I want to take away from our fire and police departments that during this pandemic year, I'm sure maybe morale is at an all-time low, you know, outside circumstances as well. But to see the leadership of those departments and to see the men and women of those departments work as hard as they have during probably most difficult time to be a police or a fire member, I think has been tremendous, right? And as Counsel Mercy has said, it's a reflection of the council's, it's a reflection of you and your office. So, you know, once again, very proud to be a counselor with just going on. You know, and finally, I just want to mention Phil Drifway and Kara Keith-Mullen, who have really been, I think, outstanding to me with, you know, silly questions up to important ones that, that maybe think is, is unnecessary. But I really think that what you have put in place is, has been proven to work. And we're very fortunate to, to have that in place. And, you know, very proud of my ability to, to give tremendous remarks and grades for your performance. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Counsel Drinkwater and then to Counsel Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And one of the benefits speaking later is that I get to say, I concur and echo so much of what my colleagues have, have said here already tonight. But I, I do just want to take a moment to, to thank both you and your staff and the staff throughout the departments who have just been incredibly, you know, effective and, and responsive. And, you know, I think there, there really aren't many issues. I've, I've just been very impressed that we could ask, whether it's, you know, here on the floor of a meeting or, or calling you and, and asking a question where you wouldn't have an informed answer about, you know, anything going on in the city, you know, right off the top of your head. So you're very just, you know, plugged in and involved to, to everything going on, you know, right from the ground up to longer-term issues. So very much, you know, appreciate that. And, and again, just I, I think it is, it's always a team effort. You've surrounded yourself with great people who, who are just extremely responsive and effective and, and wanted to take the opportunity to, to thank them as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Conway, then Counsel Chow, then Counsel Noon. Counsel Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also would like to echo a lot of the comments that have been made. And I think that if we take a look at, you know, what, what is a leader? What type of qualities do they have? And I think two of the things that really stand out is the fact that surrounding yourself with good people. And I think that the city manager certainly has done that. The Chris, Chris Clancy, Kara Keith, Connor Baldwin, Shauna, and, and so many more. And, and the other thing that really I think stands out as far as a leader is concerned, and, and I hear it all the time when I sit down with the city manager, it's, it's never about her. It's always about her staff that has put things together and has had made it work. And we all know that, you know, the leader, and, and I think that the city manager is, is a, is an excellent leader. And she's able to multitask, and that's not an easy thing to do, especially in these difficult times. As we've mentioned, and everybody's mentioned, the COVID-19. You know, we are constantly updated. Individuals in the, in the city are, are asking us on a regular basis what's going on. And the city manager has excellent communication skills. And that has been lacking, I think, in the past. And, and certainly with the city manager, she lets people know and lets the city know and informs the city and the citizens what's going on. These are very scary times. And I think the fact that by putting that information out, it, it, it lessens the, the problem a bit. At least people feel that individuals are working as hard as they can to solve the, to solve the situation. I think that if we take a look, one of the other things that really stand out is the economic development. And, you know, through this difficult time, we haven't stopped. And which been mentioned earlier tonight by a couple of people, and that is a couple of counselors, the Hamilton Canal project, that's still going strong. The success of the wind development project, which I think is, again, is extremely important. If you take a look, and we, we just had that grand opening of the new garage. During these times, which has caused so many issues for businesses, the completion of the garage was under budget and on time despite these adverse complexities of the COVID-19. And I think the, what's also very important is the public safety, and it's been mentioned by a couple of counselors again tonight. And that is working well with the police and the fire to make sure that the city is, is a safe environment for everyone. And, and I, and I, and I applaud the city manager for constantly working with, with our public safety directors. The, the city manager and the team, there, there's an area that's so very important to so many people. And that is securing the millions of additional dollars, state monies, to help repair these badly needed and neglected school buildings through that accelerated repair program. This is a program that apparently has been around for quite a while, but we haven't tapped into it. City manager did, her staff did, and literally have, has taken on responsibility to try to fix a number of these different schools and will continue, especially with the, the quality of, of air and the heating systems and so forth. And, and the other thing that, that I know the city manager has done is, is working with the, the school department so that we can have a, a very safe and school opening when the time comes for, for students and staff. And Christine Clancy has, has certainly been at the forefront of that. So I applaud them for it. I, I will say, just to, just to sum this up, I think the city manager, Eileen Donohue, Donohue has done an excellent job. And the manager continues to have the city's best interests at heart, whenever and whomever she is in negotiations with. So I applaud that. I thank her, and I thank her staff. And I think we're very, very lucky and blessed to have her. And I certainly would be in favor of the step increases for all three positions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Chow, then Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, all my colleagues said all the things that I, I truly feel. And, but I want to thank you, Madam Manager, you know, throughout this first year here. It's a real tumultuous time for, for all of us, for you and your staff, for the council body, for the residents. And, you know, we came in here with the first couple of months, it was pretty smooth. We got a lot of things done. Then COVID-19 happened, and then we have the national crisis, racism, all, all sort of problems that we have to deal with as a city at the local level and the national level. And I just want to thank you for taking the time to take each and every one of my call and take the time just to talk with me and work the issues out at length, many time, whether it's the weekday or Saturday morning or Sunday morning. You're always there to pick up your phone and work, work the issues out. Those issues are very important to the residents, to, to the neighborhood. You really created a, a work culture of just, not just being professional, but also personal, very caring, very passionate and compassionate about the city. And I can see that all the way to the people that work for you, from the head of departments. You know, one phone call, they pick up the phone call, they call right away. Any issues that we have, as the other counselors mentioned, they go on the phone, deal with the issues. If they don't get the answer right away, they will follow up back with me within the hour or within the day. Just, everybody just want to accomplish good things, want to make things happen for the city. And despite the pandemic, I, I, you know, we have a lot of issues with, with the business now, with economic crisis and so forth. But overall, with a city our size and with the demographic that we have, the, the business we have, the people we have, you know, I, I feel that the city is moving forward still. You know, it's a lot of anxiety, a lot of problems, and it is no question about that. But there is a positive feelings within the city that we're not being stuck, you know, we have problems with the testing sites. You looked for a way to do that last, last month. That was unbelievable to have two companies that did it and you responded to the residents right away. You know, countless other incidents, examples that the other counselors mentioned. You just make it happen, and these things would normally, even in normal times, it would take maybe a few days or a couple of weeks to, to maneuver, to come up with solutions. But you did it within, within the hours, within a day, within 24 hours. Just very, very impressive, and I'm, I'm very happy to have you as our city manager. And all your staff are just terrific. I want to thank all of them personally as well. And I am in favor of, of all three of you increasing the steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo everything being said about the managers. She is a true, you know, leader. You know, and sometimes it's easier, you know, if you want to looking, if you want to fix something, you go increase taxes. But no, it's not her. One of the things that I'm proud to say about her is that, you know, she looked at new revenue. Revenue is that was all, was there, but people don't really look at it. Let's say MSBA. Over, over the years, you know, she go out to MSBA and ask for money. Thirteen, over thirteen million dollars to fix our school. She didn't, she didn't say, okay, well, you know what, school needs to be fixed, and let's increase taxes. It's not her. She looked at all the revenue, all the resource and partnership of that to improve our city partnership. Speaking of partnership, you know, homelessness. Just recently, she worked with C K I and Light Connection to help these homeless people, especially during this crisis. Those are some of the things that she's done. And, you know, despite the pandemic, some of the council already said, we still do our economic development, fix our roads, the water parks, the, the, the Hamilton Canal of, of project and parking lot and, you know, helping the small businesses that impacted by COVID. This is a true leader who surrounds herself with a great team of people and partner to improve our city. And mind you, to deal with different personality on the council, that's a tough job to do, and she did it. She did it excellently. Thank you.
Thank you. For the sake of time, I'm just going to everybody, echo everything that everyone has said. I appreciate the unique relationship that we get to have as mayor and city manager. And I thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to be mayor this term. And again, yes, you're, you know, I do the pop-in almost every day. We talk. And it, it's a real pleasure working with you, and you show a lot of compassion. And you have a lot of energy for the city, so thank you very much. So Counsel Mercy or Counsel Elliot, where do we go from here? Counsel Mercy?
Well, I make the motion that we support all, all three for the next step increase, and we have a roll call.
Counsel Mercy, Elliot?
I, I just, I just think that Mary Calery was going to present results, I thought.
Okay, it's quarter of seven. We'll just do it quickly. I just want to make sure, so.
Yeah, I'm just trying to follow the process, right?
Ms. Calery, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Sure. I guess the summary of the results?
Right. So everybody, after a full review of all the evaluations received, everybody had satisfactory remarks, as you all know. And they can advance to the next step.
Okay, thank you very much.
So I made the motion, and I need a second.
Second to the motion, Counsel Rourke.
Roll call.
Roll call. Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot? Nine yeas.
So I guess now we need motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Go by Counsel Mercy, a second by Counsel Elliot. Thank you.